Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, please place all electronic devices, all electronic devices to vibrate. Madam Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us here today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support of any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that a quorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call.
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola. Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks.
Present.
Botcher. Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban. Carr. De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Present.
Felice.
Here.
Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks. Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Present.
Krishnan. Lee. Lewis.
Present.
Marmarato.
Present.
Marte.
Present.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Present.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse. Osay.
Present.
Palladino. Powers. Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera. Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Shulman.
Present.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikoff. Williams.
I'm here.
Wan. Jaeger.
Here.
Xiuang. Mealy.
Present.
Thank you. Carr. Borelli. Farias.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Reverend Shawn Lee of Mount Lebanon Baptist Church, which is located at two twenty-eight Decatur Street in Brooklyn.
To Speaker Adams, Leader Farias, and to my local councilperson Chi Ose, good afternoon. Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Supreme Creator of the cosmos, to the omnipotent sustainer of life and love, to the divine author of every line to the story of our lives, we call upon you in this sacred chamber, where decisions are made and power is held. We pray for your presence and your guidance in these halls so that your people can be served with justice and honor. In the spirit of the living legacy of Opal Lee and the ancestors she pointed to, who exemplified that legislation doesn't become real until it's actualized and adopted in the lives of all those it's supposed to impact, in the spirit of this Juneteenth season, give us courage and creativity to cut out bureaucratic obstacles and partisan politics that keep everyday New Yorkers stuck in the oppression of poverty and the fetters of unaffordable living. Give this council courage, oh Lord, to create a city that is fair, where all can thrive and live out their full potential. Give this council strength to strive for equity in every policy and compassion in every vote. Guide us, oh God, for we need you in these troubling times. I can hear the voice of our grandmothers singing out, "I need thee, oh Lord, I need thee," every hour. We need thee, oh Lord. When divisions run deep and we can no longer listen to one another, we need thee. When wars are breaking out on a global stage and even in our own backyards, we need thee. When the cries of equity and justice are met with impotent speeches and empty promises, we need thee. So we thank you that even now you are stirring up the spirit of this council. These individuals that are created in your magnificent image, stir them up now, oh God, for such a time as this. Stir them up to look beyond themselves and serve with creativity, compassion, and common sense. Bless their efforts. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. I would now like to ask Councilmember Chi Ose to spread the invocation on the record.
Reverend Shawn J. Lee is a Brooklyn-born, Morehouse-educated, passionate pastor and an unapologetic New York Knicks and Giants fan. His mission is to help people form a genuine connection with Christ, meaningful membership in church, and a tangible link to their community. He has been the lead pastor at Mount Lebanon Baptist Church in Bed-Stuy for fifteen years. Reverend Lee has also earned master degrees from Brooklyn College and Princeton Theological Seminary. A proud member of Omega Psi Phi fraternity, Reverend Lee's innovative approaches to community engagement include a monthly soup kitchen, a back-to-school barbecue benefiting five hundred kids, a volunteer-led social media presence, amazing Instagram reels, and a ministry helping domestic abuse victims. When he's not leading his congregation or cheering on his teams, he's cherishing moments with his two daughters. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you. We will now have the adoption of minutes by Councilmember Nantasha Williams.
Thank you. I make a motion that the minutes of the stated meetings of May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, and June sixth, two thousand and twenty-four be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
City, county, and borough offices? Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
Pre-considered M fifty-two, Manhattan Borough President Appointment.
Rules, privileges, and elections? Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
M fifty-three.
Thank you. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on today's land use call-ups.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
I vote aye.
Aviles.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Botcher.
Aye.
Brannon.
Aye.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers.
Aye.
Caban. Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Felice.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Thank you. Hanks. Holden.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan. Lee. Lewis.
Aye.
Marmarato.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
I vote aye.
Nurse.
Aye.
Osay.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Riley.
Aye.
Rivera. Salam.
Aye.
Salamanca.
I would like to vote aye on call-ups, with permission. I would like to vote on all coupled items on the general order calendar and all resolutions.
Permission granted.
Thank you. I vote aye on all.
Caban.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Shulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Vernikoff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wan. Jaeger.
Aye.
Xiuang. Borelli.
Aye.
Farias.
I vote aye.
Speaker Adams.
Aye.
Today's land use call-ups are adopted by a vote of forty-five in the affirmative and zero in the negative. We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. I want to start by acknowledging the loss of my constituent, fifty-seven-year-old Roger Osman and his dog Dylan, to a deadly fire in his South Ozon Park home over the weekend. His loved ones, friends, and neighbors are in our thoughts, and we are praying for a speedy recovery for the three firefighters who were injured while responding to the fire. We are in the third day of a serious heat wave that is impacting the entire northeast region. As a reminder, extreme heat is dangerous, especially for older adults, young children, and those who are pregnant. We encourage all New Yorkers to limit your time outdoors, stay hydrated, wear your sunscreen, and find the nearest cooling center in your community if needed. As we continue to negotiate the city's fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five budget, we remain committed to restoring the cuts to the critical investments in essential services that our families, communities, and all New Yorkers rely on to succeed. For working families to successfully stay in our city, the final budget must support housing, early childhood education, support for our schools and students, CUNY, mental health and community safety programs, cultural institutions, libraries, parks, and senior services. These are not just council priorities, they are the priorities of New Yorkers. These are not extras or luxuries, but are the programs that people throughout this city rely on, and they're what makes our city work. Working and middle-class families across this city, our municipal workers, and union households in all five boroughs cannot afford these resources being lost permanently because it impacts the stability of our neighborhoods and city. The next few days will be critical for our city and the communities we represent, and we really do have a choice. The council is clear that we must choose the responsible, smart approach that invests in our city's success and lays the foundation for our future. For the health, safety, and well-being of our city, the choice is clear. Today is World Refugee Day, a time when we celebrate refugees living here in New York City and all around the world, and honor those who we have lost in pursuit of safety and opportunity. We are proudly a city of immigrants and welcome those who seek refuge in our city. And on July fourth, we will celebrate Independence Day, and I wish everyone and all of your families a happy and safe Fourth of July. Before I continue, I want to wish a happy early birthday to Councilmembers Raphael Salamanca, Linda Lee, and Amanda Farias. Have a great birthday and celebration. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following finance items: A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, amending a thirty-year Article XI tax exemption covering twelve rent-stabilized buildings in Councilmember Hudson, Aviles, and Hanif's districts. The amendment will extend the period of exemption from thirty years to forty years. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, authorizing a forty-year Article XI tax exemption for the preservation of four rent-stabilized buildings in Councilmember Ung's district. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, authorizing a forty-year Article XI tax exemption for the preservation of four rent-stabilized buildings in Councilmember Stevens' district. And a pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, amending a forty-year Article XI tax exemption covering twenty rent-stabilized buildings and three vacant lots in Councilmember Felice and Stevens' districts. The amendment will address the phasing out of existing J fifty-one benefits and include an additional vacant lot into the existing project area. Next, we'll vote on the following land use items: The Landmarks Preservation Commission's designation of the New York Public Library's Tremont Branch in Councilmember Felice's district. This building was designed in the classical revival style by the prominent architectural firm of Carrier and Hastings and opened in nineteen oh five. In nineteen sixty-seven, the Tremont Branch was one of eight New York Public Library branches to participate in the South Bronx Project, which brought in bilingual staff, Spanish-language books, and programs for the people living in the South Bronx, and continues to be a staple in the community. One oh four dash one oh eight West one hundred thirty-ninth Street, ANCP Cluster, an HPD application for a UDAP approval disposition of city-owned property and an Article XI tax exemption to facilitate the renovation and preservation of a five-city-owned buildings, which approximately seventy-three affordable cooperative homeownership units in Councilmember Salam's district. Red Hook Coastal Resiliency, an application for city map changes and property easement acquisitions by several city agencies, including DOT and DDC, to facilitate the construction of a flood protection system comprised of flood walls, deployable flood barriers, raised streets, and other supporting infrastructure. This project will reduce the risk of coastal storm flooding along the waterfront in Red Hook, in Councilmember Aviles and Hanif's districts. Next, we will vote on the following appointments. Resolution four fifty-four, sponsored by Councilmember Keith Powers, would approve the appointment of Helen Skipper as a member of the New York City Board of Corrections. Resolution four fifty-five, sponsored by Councilmember Keith Powers, would designate Tricia Tate for appointment by the mayor as a director of the New York City Health and Hospitals Corporation. Resolution four fifty-six, sponsored by Councilmember Keith Powers, would designate Dr. Vincent Calamia for appointment by the mayor as a director of the New York City Health and Hospitals Corporation. Resolution four fifty-seven, sponsored by Councilmember Keith Powers, would approve the reappointment of Michael McSweeney as city clerk and clerk of the city council to serve the remainder of a six-year term that expires on May twelfth, two thousand and thirty. A pre-considered a pre-considered resolution to approve the appointment of Raju Man as a commissioner of the City Planning Commission. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Resolution four forty-seven, sponsored by myself, Majority Whip Selena Brooks Powers, and Councilmember Nantasha Williams, would designate the first Sunday in June annually as Flake Legacy Day in the City of New York to recognize the spiritual, educational, civic, and economic contributions of the Reverend Doctors Floyd and Elaine Flake in service to the Greater Allen AME Cathedral of New York and to the Queens community. Their impact on our city will be remembered forever, and we are proud to celebrate Flake Legacy Day every year. We thank Regina Paul for her hard work. Introduction nine fifty-one A, sponsored by Councilmember Lincoln Wrestler, would amend the charter to modify the comptroller's auditing duty. This bill would allow the comptroller to treat all community boards as a single combined agency and all public administrators' offices as a single combined agency for each auditing cycle, reducing administrative burden. The comptroller would have to send a copy of the draft audit or audit report to each office or board that is covered by the audit and would have to provide in writing a reasonable deadline for its review and response. Thank you to our staff members, Jay Sri Ganapathy. Introduction six forty-two, sponsored by Councilmember Kevin Riley, would officially rename Williamsbridge Square in the Bronx to Marcus Garvey Square. We thank our staff members Christopher Satori and Patrick Mulvahill. Pre-considered introduction, sponsored by Councilmember Shekhar Krishnan, would co-name one hundred thoroughfares and public spaces based on requests of councilmembers whose districts include the location. We thank our staff members Christopher Satori and Patrick Mulvahill. And Introduction nine oh four A, sponsored by Councilmember Pirina Sanchez, would require the Department of Buildings to create a proactive inspection program to identify hazardous buildings using predictive analytics, weighing factors, including but not limited to building data, violation history, compliance filings, and disciplinary history of registered design professionals. Owners of certain buildings would be required to submit corrective action plans to get their buildings into good repair. We thank our staff member Austin Malone. Thank you very much for your attention. I turn it back over to you, Madam Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Riley.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Sorry, I just had it in front of me and it disappeared, and there goes my time. On December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, what started us a quiet day, as you've heard me say in the chambers before, upended the lives of a hundred and seventy people as the corner of nineteen fifteen Billingsley Terrace collapsed in broad daylight. Children were walking home from school, neighbors were stopping into the bodega to get chips or soda or water. The collapse followed years of neglect and hundreds of violations of this property. There were glaring warning signs here, and the tenants of the building, as well as New Yorkers, were left asking, "What did New York City do with the information that we had?" It turns out, DOB largely operates today on a reactive basis, answering three-one-one complaints and emergency situations like the collapse. But with New York City home to over one million buildings, nearly seventy-five percent of which were built prior to nineteen sixty, we cannot operate in this way. Intro nine oh four is a novel approach. It will require the city to identify and act on issues before they become major problems using predictive analytics. The Billingsley Terrace Structural Integrity Act, as some calling it, will require the Department of Buildings to weigh factors, including age of the structure, maintenance structural issues, and importantly, given the history of nineteen fifteen, the disciplinary history of registered design professionals, including contractors and licensees doing work at the property. Because you might recall that it was a design professional who misclassified a load-bearing column here. Thank you so much, Madam Speaker, for your leadership in getting something so complex through to the finish line, and also to Commissioner Otto at the Department of Buildings and the team for your collaboration in getting this bill right. I also want to thank the tenants who have been thinking much beyond themselves and wanting to make New York City safer for all, of course, to our committee councils, Austin Maloney, thank you, and everyone involved. Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Riley, followed by Majority Whip Brooks Powers.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I want to highlight intro six forty-two, my bill to formally rename Williamsbridge Square in my district to Marcus Garvey Square. This effort strengthens the passionate advocacy and partnership of community leaders and organizations, working tirelessly to empower our communities with education, health resources, and social action. In the northeast Bronx, much like all of our diverse communities citywide, cultural traditions come together, creating the neighborhoods rich in pride and resiliency. I am proud to represent District Twelve community born and raised with my Jamaican heritage. Marcus Garvey, a monumental political activist in history, once said, "A people without the knowledge of their past, history, origin, and culture is like a tree without any roots." This renaming honors Marcus Garvey's legacy, but most importantly connects our community's history with its present and future. Marcus Garvey's legacy lives on through organizations like the Jamaican Progressive League and Miss Sadie Campbell from our community, who has been trying to do this renaming since two thousand and five, has been inspired and dedicated to enriching the lives of our community members and young people. The street renaming and co-naming bills being passed today will revitalize our city's public spaces by ensuring they reflect and celebrate the diverse cultural contribution of all New Yorkers. I'd like to thank my colleagues who supported this piece of legislation. Thank you.
Majority Whip Brooks Powers, followed by Minority Leader Borelli.
Thank you. I'd like to speak in support of several worthy people that are up for appointments today, including Raju Man, for a member of the New York City Planning Commission, as well as Michael McSweeney, Queens's own, as our city clerk and clerk of the council, who's been a tremendous asset to us here in this body. Also, I'd like to recognize Tricia Tate as a director of the New York City Health and Hospitals Corporation. Tricia brings a wealth of experience in management and leadership, having successfully led her own company and assisted dozens more in her capacity as CEO. Tricia is not only the CEO of FinCor, a consultancy for growth-oriented small to mid-sized businesses, but also a resident of Council District Thirty-One. I believe she will excel as director for the New York City Health and Hospitals and bring our community's voice to the table as the New York City Health and Hospital works to expand with the Gotham Health Services in our district coming soon, as well as as we push to secure a trauma hospital on the peninsula in partnership with Health and Hospital. I wholeheartedly support Tricia Tate's appointment and look forward to her continued leadership serving the City of New York. With that, I ask my colleagues to vote in favor of her appointment, as well as those presented before. Thank you.
Minority Leader Borelli, followed by Councilmember Palladino, then Joseph.
Thank you. I'd like to highlight one particular street co-naming in today's package, specifically that of Nick Demora, a young man who lived not too far from my house. He was born in nineteen ninety-eight, and at the age of two, he was diagnosed with autism and verbal apraxia, which prevented him from speaking throughout his entire life. His mother realized there were no options for kids like him at the time, and she ended up founding an organization called the Grace Foundation, which this body funds yearly and helps thousands of children with autism on Staten Island and does just a fantastic job. Nick adapted a method called the rapid prompting method into a way where he was able to survive. into a way where he was able to spell out and communicate. And as he got older, we realized that he was as competent as so many other kids in his age. When he was older, he founded an organization called Crimson Rise, which supports autistic individuals and teaches them this spelling method to communicate. He unfortunately died in 2023, following a severe epilepsy. And in his passing, his organs went on to save the life of eight other individuals. But through his advocacy as someone with disability and someone who is just frankly famous in my neck of the woods, he has helped thousands and thousands of families going through the crisis of developmental disabilities in this city. So I ask all of you to support it, and I thank you for including him.
Councilmember Palladino, followed by Joseph, then Botcher.
Thank you very much. It's my honor and my privilege today to introduce Paul Vallone Way, which will be at the intersection of 156th Street and 32nd Avenue, right here in District 19, Queens. Paul's life was cut short on January 28 this past year, 2024. You all knew him very well. As you know, he was a former councilmember here for eight years. During his tenure as city councilman, he did much to improve the district, working together with other elected officials in schools, sports, groups, nonprofits, and every civic and cultural association. Let him be known that he reestablished the City Council CUNY Merit - give me a minute - Board Based Scholarship, formerly known as the Peter F. Vallone Scholarship, securing over $10 million in funding in the city budget for full-service animal shelters in both the Queens and the Bronx. Paul will always be remembered for his sparkling personality and his wonderful smile. And his wife is here, his brother is here. So on behalf of myself and community District 19, we congratulate you, and we look forward to the co-naming. Thank you.
Councilmember Joseph, followed by Botcher, then Salam.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm honored to present six names of residents, leaders, and community advocates for co-naming. So we'll start with Ferdinand Valme Way, Tiara Puyol, Tyler Kobe Nichols, Gibbs, Big Gibbs Seraphin Way, Mary Kay Gallagher, and Ursule Courtney Way. These individuals are not more than just they're more than just our family members, neighbors. They were strong, fierce community leaders. They helped shape Council District 40 in New York City as a whole. Today, it is our turn to honor them by co-naming these streets in their memory. By doing so, we hope this small gesture will remind their families and friends and colleagues and all of us that their efforts and investments in our communities have not been in vain. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to present these names, and I look forward to my colleagues voting soon. Special thank you to the team, central staff. Thank you all.
Councilmember Botcher, followed by Salam, and then Abreu.
Today, we are voting on a street co-naming in the name of Richard Henderson, a great New Yorker and someone who was the school crossing guard at Avenue School in Chelsea for over a decade. His life was tragically cut short when he intervened to break up a fight on a subway car. He died doing what he did in life, which is helping people. Over his decade at Avenue School, he helped thousands of residents of all ages safely cross the street and became a beloved neighborhood fixture. His presence and care at this location was such that Richie became known as Mr. 25th Street or Mr. 25th and 10th. I made this recommendation because of Richie's extraordinary impact on Chelsea, his contributions to the community, and the substantial community support for this name. So we will be naming this Richie's Corner. We also are naming an intersection in Chelsea after Erwin Cohen, who transformed a derelict factory where the first Oreo cookie was produced in 1912 into something we now know as Chelsea Market, an exuberant 21st century food bazaar that helped revitalize the Chelsea neighborhood.
Councilmember Salam, followed by Abreu, then Lewis.
Thank you. Today, I am proud to vote on Intro 968, which includes the co-naming of streets in honor of Ruby Kitchen Bradley, Carl C. Green, Edwin Eddie Green, and Helene Numser Brathwaite, who interestingly tutored me while I was kicked out of school for the Central Park Jogger case. They all left a lasting impact, not only on Harlem, but also in New York City in reshaping the lives of Black Americans. It is because of their sacrifices our communities continue to thrive. And I am honored to have these renaming occurring during my tenure as a city council member. Additionally, I'm happy to vote on the land use item 81, which my office met with HPD and vetted the plan multiple times to ensure that the tenants were treated fairly and that they truly have access to affordable home ownership. During the time of skyrocketing rent prices of homes, I'm happy to vote in favor of the Article 11 tax exemption for the 104 104, 108, 139th Street ANC Project, ANCP Project, and look forward to continuing to partnership in ensuring homes are affordable and attainable. And just a minor clarification, that is Edwin Eddie Ellis Way. Thank you.
Councilmember Abreu, followed by Lewis, then Narcisse.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I would like to thank this council today for voting on pre-considered Intro 968. The street renaming is especially meaningful for my constituents on the Upper West Side, the renaming of 103rd Street in Riverside after Cynthia Doty, who died after a brief illness on July 17 last year. She was a district leader and a beloved friend of the Upper West Side. She was a member of Three Parks Democrats. She was a tireless, gracious, wise, and political organizer and the deputy chief clerk of the New York County Board of Elections. She led with heart, she led with compassion, and perhaps something that always stuck out to me in my knowing her was she always tried to find a way to the middle and reaching compromise and trying to make as much people happy while also realizing that that will not always be the case. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lewis, followed by Narcisse.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. I am proud to have partnered with Councilmember Joseph on the co-naming of Pastor Ursule Courtney and Gibbs Seffrian, two remarkable leaders in the Flatbush East Flatbush communities. Pastor Ursule Courtney, a Panamanian-American passionate clergy member, dedicated her life to empowering counseling and supporting women of all ages. Her unique insights and expertise inspired many, nurturing a new generation of ministers attuned to community needs in challenging times and executing initiatives that would provide free resources for underprivileged children. Pastor Ursule tragically lost her life after being struck by a car on Ditmish Avenue. Gibbs Seffrian, another beloved community leader, a longtime resident of Flatbush known for being a gentle giant, his warmth and innovative leadership in workforce development changed lives. Fondly referred to as Big Gibbs by all who knew him, he played a pivotal role in providing essential resources, supporting those in need in the areas of job development, wellness, and advocacy in Brooklyn and beyond. His contributions were immeasurable before his untimely passing at the age of 42 from COVID-19 in March 2020. Their legacies will continue to inspire and positively impact our community for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse.
Thank you, Madam. I ask for your support, all my colleagues, in co-naming the street where Detective Joe Calibris lived in Marine Park. Detective Calibris was a dedicated member of our NYPD and an active beloved figure in our community. His service and the positive impact, he may deserve to be remembered. Co-naming the street in his honor will serve as a lasting tribute to his legacy and a reminder of the sacrifices made by those in law enforcement. It will also highlight the importance of mental health care to all, especially our first responders who face immense pressures. Please join me in supporting this legislation to ensure that Detective Calibris' memory and contribution are honored in a way that befits his life and service for our communities and the city at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'd like to take a few moments to acknowledge the folks on my street co-namings that we're introducing today. Sarah Nguyen, a dedicated tenant association president; Gus Denolis, a dedicated community garden volunteer and truly the lifeblood of our waterfront community garden in Classen Point and Harding Park. Two people that I knew personally that really gave their all, both to my council district, but also to this city. And lastly, George Romero, someone I'd like to recognize for highlighting their artistry that comes from my community. He's better known for creating the Night of the Living Dead series, but it's always great when we can highlight the good that comes from our communities. And so I just wanted to say thank you to their families and to them for what they gave both my community, the future of my community, and our city. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, report of special committees. Sorry, Councilwoman Bravilas.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I was just going to do it on the vote, but since we are here now with your grace, I also would like to highlight a co-naming for District 38. We are going to be voting on a co-naming for Ijaira Gonzalez, who was born and raised in the Sunset Park community and was an activist. Ijaira was a devoted mother, sister, aunt, friend, and a neighbor, and was very dedicated to her community. She devoted her life to service and gave back to both her local community and to Puerto Rico as she activated during many moments, but particularly during Hurricanes Irma and Maria, which devastated the island. She created the 24th Street Festival and a nonprofit called Just Three, dedicated to the development of the performing arts. Ijaira left an indelible mark on her community and is survived by her children, Justice Catalea and her sisters Frances, Yashain, Sheika, and her parents Hector and Frances, two dedicated community activists as well, and of course, the many lives she's touched. We honor and remember you, Ijaira. Gracias. Thank you, Speaker. And I hope everyone notes that so many New Yorkers are named today in these street co-namings. Our city is filled with wonderful, compassionate, contributing people, and I thank all of them and their families. Thank you.
Councilmember Felice.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm proud to partner with Councilmember Perina Sanchez for the co-naming on Fordham Road and Grand Concourse in the Bronx, calle Duarte Sanchez Imella. Duarte Sanchez Imella, three founding fathers of the Dominican Republic, fought for freedom in the Dominican Republic. Their legacy and contributions have positively impacted our communities in many ways, including in the Bronx and specifically in the Fordham section of the Bronx, a community that's home to one of the largest concentrations of members of the Dominican community, a vibrant community with many small business owners, great culture, and so much more. So much that was only made possible because of the contributions, the life and the legacy of the three founding fathers of the Dominican Republic, Duarte Sanchez Imella. So I'm very proud of this co-naming. Thank you so much.
Okay, officially, seeing no one else signed up to speak, report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Finance, pre-considered LU 94 and Reso 473 through pre-considered LU 97 and Reso 476, tax exemptions.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Governmental Operations, state and federal legislation, Intro 951A, comptroller audits.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro 904A, building inspection program.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 80 and Reso 477, New York Public Library Tremont Branch.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 81 and Reso 478, 104-108 West 139th Street, ANCP Cluster.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 84 and Reso 479, and LU 85 and Reso 480, Red Hook Coastal Resiliency.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Parks and Recreation, Intro 642, Marcus Garvey Square.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered Intro 968, naming 100 thoroughfares and public places.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, Reso 454, approving the appointment of Helen Skipper, Board of Corrections.
Coupled on general orders.
Reso 455, approving the designation for appointment of Tricia Tate, Health and Hospitals Corporation.
Coupled on general orders.
Reso 456, approving the designation for appointment of Dr. Vincent Calamia, Health and Hospitals Corporation.
Coupled on general orders.
Reso 457, approving the appointment of Michael M. McSweeney, city clerk and clerk of the council.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered M. 52 and Reso pre-considered Reso 481, approving the appointment of Raju Man, City Planning Commission.
Coupled on general orders.
Resolution appointing various persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders. I now ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's general orders calendar.
Abreu.
Aye.
Areola.
Aye on all, with the exception of Reso 454, for which I am a no.
Thank you. Aviles.
Aye on all.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye on all.
Botcher.
Aye on all.
Brennan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Aye.
Brooks-Powers.
Aye on all.
Caban.
Aye on all.
Carr.
No on Resolution 454, and aye on the rest.
De La Rosa.
Dinowitz.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Really excited today to be voting on a street co-naming in honor of Sandra Pabon, a community leader being honored today. She was an active and cherished member of the Northwest Bronx community, serving as a chaplain of the 49th Precinct Community Clergy Council, as well as district leader and state committee woman in the 80th Assembly District, a union delegate, substance use counselor, first responder, mobilized countless initiatives in response to Hurricane Maria and during the pandemic, always fighting for her community in the institutions that we loved and even on the street corner, making sure food got into the hands of every single person who needed it. And I am really proud to be voting in honor of that street co-naming. She leaves behind a legacy which will long endure the passage of time. I vote aye on the street co-naming, and I vote aye on all the bills today.
Felice.
Aye on all.
Gennaro.
Madam Leader, I would like to talk on my vote, speak on my vote.
Permission granted.
Thank you. I wish to speak also on the street co-naming for our beloved Paul Vallone. So happy to see his wife Hannah Marie and his brother Perry. We're, of course, thinking of our colleague Peter Jr., our colleague Peter Sr. I got to know Paul very well by having a 35-year association with the Vallone family and going on religious retreat with them for decades. I learned a lot about life from conversations with Paul, and it's very fitting that we do this. We love him very much. This is the least we can do. I also wish to join the chorus of people who are in favor and of renewing, or whatever the word is, for reappointing Mike McSweeney as the city clerk and clerk of the council. I've been in government for many, many years, and rarely have I ever met someone with such integrity integrity and just, just, just the way that he deals with people and how diligent he is and how effective he is and how he's universally admired. He's a credit to the Council and to the city, and we, I, I think I speak for everyone in wishing him Godspeed in all he does. And I'm gonna go outside the limits of the rules for just a second and introduce a woman sitting right behind me. My little sister Gina from the great state of Florida is here and joining us. Sorry to break the rules. When I'm over 65, I think that sort of comes with the territory, so thank you all very much for your indulgence.
Councilmember Gennaro.
Yeah, I should vote too. Okay, yes. I vote aye. Thanks. It's, it's, it's like an over 65 thing. I forgot. Okay, I vote aye.
Thank you, Councilmember. De La Rosa.
Aye.
Thank you. Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Thank you.
Holden.
Aye on all, except for Reso 454, 951A, of which I vote no, and I abstain on Intro
Hudson.
Aye on all, and I'm especially proud to vote to reappoint our City Clerk, Mike McSweeney.
Joseph.
Aye on all.
Krishnan. Lewis.
Aye on all.
Mamorato.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of 454, I vote no, and congratulations, Mr. McSweeney.
Marte.
Aye.
Milly.
Aye.
Menon.
Aye on all.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
I vote aye on all, and congratulations, Mr. McSweeney. Thank you.
Thank you. Nurse.
I vote aye.
Osay.
I vote aye.
Palladino.
I vote aye on all, except for Reso 454, in which I vote no.
Thank you. Powers.
I'm voting aye, and I want to add in my support and happiness that we're adding Paul Vallone Way here to the borough of Queens, and I am so glad to have his family here in the chamber to be part of that today. I also want to congratulate, and, and, and I should say, as folks know, Paul was the best, and there won't be no street naming that will be able to really capture his essence, but it will be nice to see that in the, in the neighborhood in the borough of Queens. Thank you to Councilmember Palladino and others for, for doing that. I also want to congratulate my friend, Mike McSweeney, on his reappointment. It was a tough one there, and, and of course, Raju Mann, who I think is watching probably at home for his appointment to the City Planning Board as well.
Wrestler.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I want to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Powers. Really thrilled that we're recognizing our former colleague here, Councilmember Vallone. Really excited to see another former leader in the City Council, serving on the City Planning Commission in Raju Mann, who will do a terrific job, and really want to congratulate our clerk, who does a tremendous job serving the people of New York City each and every day on his reappointment. Could not be more well deserved. And just want to thank the Speaker for her support of Intro 951A. It's been a pleasure working with the Controller's Office to draft this legislation that will better streamline community board audits and hopefully better identify systemic issues and opportunities for improvements at community boards citywide, and allow the Controller's Office to put resources really where they're needed most. So thank you to colleagues for support on that bill and to everyone who helped put it together. Aye on all.
Riley.
Aye.
Salam.
Aye on all.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Schulman.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Dr. Daniel Malakoff was senselessly murdered in my community in 2007. He was a prominent orthodontist leader in the Baharian, orthodontist and leader in the Baharian Jewish community in Forest Hills, Queens. Dr. Malakoff was also a philanthropist, offering pro bono treatment to first responders and those unable to afford orthodontic care. His dedication earned him the prestigious Top Orthodontist Award from the U.S. Academy of Orthodontics. I am proud today to vote on legislation to co-name Yellowstone Boulevard and 64th Road as Dr. Daniel Malakoff Way. In addition, I too want to add to the echoes of the voices about Paul Vallone, who was a friend and political mentor, and I am one of the folks from Queens, just want to note that. I am very honored also to be able to vote for his street co-naming as well, and Mr. McSweeney, congratulations. Thank you.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
I also want to express my support for the co-naming of the Paul Vallone, and always happy to see the family here in chambers. Aye on all.
Vernikov.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of Reso 454, and I abstain on Intro 642. Thank you.
Williams.
I vote aye on all. Congrats, Mike.
Jaeger.
May I, excuse me, explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Not really sure how many more times I'll have a chance to be here and honor and recognize a good friend who's really part of a family that's given so much to this city, but himself, anybody who knew him, Paul, he had a smile, he had a brotherly hug, he was just a tremendous, tremendous heart and soul, and I'm really proud to be a part of the Council that gives me a chance to vote in favor of, of some small way to recognize what he's contributed. Perry, and it's really good to see you here, and I know that the Speaker is, is in so much pain, but he's such a giant in this city, and I know how much he has on his shoulders these days, and I'm very, very grateful for his service, your service, Peter Jr.'s service, and of course, everything that Paul gave to this city. Thank you. I also just want to very quickly thank Councilman Powers for including legislation in the co-namings bill to recognize Yad Vashem, incredibly important move, especially at this moment in time, and for those, I'm not going to go too long in explaining what it is, but if you don't, you should get a chance to know what that is all about. I vote aye on all, with the exception of Introduction 951, Resolution 454, and I abstain on Intro 642. Thank you.
Borelli.
Aye on all, with the exception of Reso 454.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye on all, and I am associating my remarks with those of Councilmember Powers with regard to the amazing Vallone family, my other family in my heart, who are here today to commemorate the street co-naming of our beloved Paul. Tina, thank you again for the picture. It sits on my desk downstairs. It is a tremendous conversation piece for everybody that sits at that table with me and meets with me on a daily basis. I thank you all. I love you all from the bottom of my heart. He will never be forgotten. Michael McSweeney, Queens zone, we congratulate you. We will never let you leave us, just saying that. And I will also thank my colleagues today for also recognizing that the City of New York will recognize the first Sunday in June annually in commemoration of Flake Legacy Day. The Reverend Doctors Floyd and Elaine Flake built Southeast Queens everything from housing to private school K through 12, all the way through innumerable public service work and a whole lot more, domestic violence facility as well, senior housing, family housing. They literally built neighborhoods in Southeast Queens, and I am so very proud to sponsor legislation that will forever commemorate their legacy. With that, I vote aye on all.
All items on today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of 45 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exception of Resolution 454, which was adopted by a vote of 37 in the affirmative, eight in the negative, and zero abstentions. And Introduction 951A, which was adopted by a vote of 43 in the affirmative, two in the negative, and zero abstentions, and Introduction 642A, which was adopted by a vote of 42 in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and three abstentions. Introduction and reading of bills. All bills have been referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda. Thank you. We will now move into discussion of resolutions, and I'd like to call Majority Whip, Brooks Powers.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a moment to speak in support of Resolution 447, also known as Flake Day, in honor of my pastors and mentors, the Reverend Doctor Floyd H. and Elaine Flake, for the legacy that they have created in the Southeast Queens communities for the 48 years of service. The work that they have done has transcended beyond the, the walls of the church and into the community and beyond, and I'm so grateful to have been able to worship under their leadership and to be able to be counseled under their leadership. And the two of them embody the vision of true love, celebrating life's highs and lows with God at the center of their union, and their incredible and enduring legacy will continue to inspire and guide individuals and families, including myself, for generations to come. So this is most deserving, and I am so honored to be on this piece of legislation with Speaker Adams and Councilmember Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, we will, Councilmember Brewer.
I did sign up earlier. I'm just talking about Intro 963 to be introduced, introduced, and I think what I want to say about it is, if I told you that a city vendor that's paid to listen in on your phone, capture your sensitive personal data and then sell it to anybody they want, I think you would agree that this is not a good thing.
Councilmember, you are not speaking on resolutions right now.
No, I'm not. I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about resolutions. Oh, wait.
Would you like me to put you down for general discussion?
Yes, it should be on already.
I will do that. Thank you. We will now have a voice vote on today's resolution. If you wish to vote against or abstain from today's resolution, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolution into the record. Resolution 447 designates the first Sunday in June annually as Flake Legacy Day in the City of New York to recognize the spiritual, educational, civic, and economic contributions of the Reverend Doctors Floyd and Elaine Flake in service to the Greater Allen AME Cathedral of New York and to their community in Queens. With all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion, and I'd like to call on Councilmember Areola, followed by Sanchez and Riley.
Thank you, Majority Leader. I'm proud to introduce two bills that are dedicated to the well-being of our veterans. Resolution 465 calls upon the New York City Housing Authority to include an admission preference for public housing in its next proposed agency plan for all veterans of the U.S. military. Veterans do not receive admission preference or specific priority in public housing under NICA. The Council has historically advocated for the inclusion of admission preferences for veterans within NICA's policies, expressly calling for a preference for veterans with a military service-connected disability in the years 2004, 2006, 2010, and yet, NICA still does not have an admission preference for veterans. I'm asking for you to sign onto this resolution and make this a priority for our veterans. Additionally, as of 2022, there were approximately 500 homeless veterans in New York City, with many others who are barely getting by. That is why I'm asking for your support for Intro 959, which would establish a program administered by the Department of Veteran Services in coordination with the Department of Social Services to provide monthly rental assistance to homeless veterans, covering their monthly housing rent up to a maximum amount based on the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development's fair market rate value, uh, rent guidelines. Veterans would not require to contribute from their, from their income toward the rent. Vouchers for vets, as we call it, would finally give veterans the stability they deserve and the chance of a better life after combat. Our veterans have put their lives on the line for our freedoms, and through this legislation, we can show that we all care about them and that we are truly grateful for all that they were willing to risk for each and every one of us. I hope everyone signs on. Thank you for the time.
Councilmember Sanchez, followed by Riley, then Holden.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and I'm glad I figured out the trick to not be the last one in general discussion. Today, I want to just take a moment to highlight an incredible human being, Kadim Robinson, who has been my Deputy Chief of Staff for Policy and Communications since the very beginning of my term in the Council. An immigrant from Jamaica, they arrived to study at CUNY-John Jay and got to me after working at the mayor's office and for the public advocate. Oh, I said I wouldn't do this, okay. Kadim, Kadim, as my baby says, Kadim, Titi Kadim. We are so lucky that you formed part of our inaugural team. You had maybe four jobs in our office, all while finishing your graduate degree at NYU and leading citywide advocacy efforts in the LGBTQ community. You are truly a star, a beacon of light who leaves spaces so much brighter for you having been there, from fighting for street vendors to expanding access to rapid STI testing, to today's Billingsley Structural Integrity Bill, the City Hepps Expansion, and so much more. You've really left your mark. District 14 is so lucky to have had your service, and I'm blessed to have established such a strong foundation with your help. Thank you for everything that you have done for us. All the best to you. The world is a better place, and I am going to miss you in the People's Office. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Kadim.
I second that. Thank you, Kadim. You've been great. Councilmember Riley, followed by Holden, then Palladino.
Thank you, Majority Leader. True commitment to diversity means focusing on equity, ensuring that resources and support are accessible to our most underserved and disenfranchised communities. Today, I'm introducing Intro 975, calling on the city to establish an Office of Black Male Excellence. New York City is the only huge city that does not have an office focused on black male excellence, and this office would address the unique socioeconomic challenges faced by black men in our community. Alongside my colleagues, Councilmember Salam, Osay, and Banks, who are co-prime sponsors on this bill, we are dedicated to addressing systematic inequalities and creating pathways for opportunities for more black and brown men in New York City. An Office of Black Male Excellence, liaisoning with our city agencies, would ensure that the intersectional needs of this group are considered in policymaking and essential program implementation. This office would also promote transparency and accountability through regular reporting on its activities, analysis, and recommendations. In addition, with my Hood Caucus colleagues, William Stevens and myself, we are introducing Reso 472, which calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation opposing the use of MWBE investment for New York State and New York City pension funds. This bill not only forces a more inclusive economy by allocating at least 20% of those funds to minority and women-owned businesses, it also ensures that historically underrepresented groups and communities have a fair opportunity to benefit from critical public resources. And lastly, I'm proud to co-sponsor with Councilmember Williams, Intro 978, requiring 311 to provide relevant resources in response to tree pruning-related requests, as such as online links to DPR maintained maps on tree inspections and pruning schedules, as well as informational webpages. I urge my colleagues to support these vital pieces of legislation. Thank you.
Councilmember Holden, followed by Palladino, then Brewer.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Colleagues, today I urge you to sign on to Intro 967, which would end the barbaric horse carriage industry in our city. This bill, known as Rider's Law, is named after the horse whose tragic collapse and death on the streets of Manhattan
the streets of Manhattan highlighted the inhumanity of this industry. Rider's former owners now face criminal charges, and his story has shown the world that the cruelty of this industry endures daily. Intro nine six seven is straightforward. It would end the horse carriage industry, ensure the horses involved are not sent to slaughter, and create a workforce program to transition workers into other industries. This humane and forward-thinking approach is long overdue in this city. We have the opportunity to end this heartless industry and demonstrate our commitment to animal welfare and labor. I thank my colleagues who are co-prime sponsors on this bill, Councilmembers Botcher, Caban, Joseph, Powers, Marte, Ariola, and Hanif. I, I welcome the rest of you to all join this, in this effort. Together, we can make a powerful statement that our city values compassion and the humane treatment of all beings. I also want to express my gratitude to the advocates who have fought tirelessly for this cause, including NiCLASS, VFOR, PETA, and the ASPCA, and many others, as well as the animal sanctuaries and horse rescues like Unbridled Heroes Project and Rancho Relaxo. Let's seize this moment, colleagues, to do the right thing. The time to act is now. Please sign on to intro nine six seven to finally end this cruel industry once and for all, and especially with the weather that we're having. These horses, or many of them, are still out there. So please, let's, let's end this. Thank you.
Councilmember Palladino, followed by Brewer.
Well, this is a little off topic by what was being discussed here today, but I want to take a moment to congratulate the NYPD and the Queens DA Katz for their swift work in apprehending and jailing the migrant who brutally raped a thirteen-year-old girl this week. This crime shook this city to its core, as well as the nation, and I want to take a moment to please remember the victim of this crime, who was thirteen years old and is scarred for life. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Brewer.
Intro nine six three would end the surveillance of people in the custody of the Department of Correction and everyone they talk to on the outside. If I told you that there's a vendor that's paid to listen in on your phone and capture your sensitive personal data and maybe sell it, you wouldn't think I was telling the truth. But the Department of Correction records approximately twenty-five thousand phone calls every day between people inside jails, anyone they talk to, parents, spouses, et cetera. The vendor secures technologies and uploads everything they scrape to a paid subscription database used by law enforcement across the country. It has a history of unlawful surveillance practices, big article in The New Yorker. There was a coalition of public defenders who sued the Department of Correction earlier this year, accusing them of recording thousands of phone calls between people in custody and their defense attorneys. So this legislation would ban the recording of phone calls. It's sponsored by Councilmember Salam, Rivera, Nurse, Krishnan, and Ayala, and I urge you to join the list. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Gennaro.
Thank you, Madam Leader. I just, I just wanted to mark the passing of my idol and many people's idol who follow baseball, the great Willie Mays, the greatest baseball player to ever play, the greatest game ever invented. People know a lot about his career. What they don't know is that when the, when the Dodgers, when the Giants moved from, you know, New York to San Francisco, Willie Mays had difficulty buying a house because he was black. And it, it just, he's an amazing story. I remember when he was playing, his career ended fifty-one years ago, but when he came back to the Mets for seventy-two and seventy-three, we all got to see him again. It was like him coming home, and I just want to, I just felt it fitting to put on the record his passing. Again, you know, the greatest of all time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Seeing no one else signed up to speak today, I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. The stated meeting of June twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, is hereby adjourned.